Chair, you have quorum.
Okay, um, welcome everybody to our April general meeting. We'll call this or meetings order at six thirty-one P M. Commissioner Mishra.
Present.
Commissioner Pradeep Kumar.
Present.
District three present. Commissioner Tilo.
Present.
Commissioner Andrew Liu.
Present.
Commissioner Bonsal.
Present.
Commissioner Megan Loon.
Present.
Commissioner Aldo Well.
Present.
Commissioner Singh.
Present.
Commissioner Mascherinas.
Present.
Commissioner John Pott.
Present.
Okay, so we're going to move on to our consent calendar. Do, these are all the items on our consent calendar today, including the last agenda and meeting minutes and proposals from districts one, three, four, seven, and ten. Are there any items that anybody wishes to pull out for discussion?
Commissioner Liu moves to move poverty and the guarantee income to discussion.
Are there any other items? Okay, do we have a motion to approve the consent calendar minus district ten's po- poverty proposal?
Commissioner Liu motions to approve all of them except for that mo- that item.
Do we have a second?
Commissioner Liu seconds a motion.
Okay, this. And passes. So we'll move on to public record.
We do have one today, so I will read and summarize some of the items. I appreciate the concern that the youth commission has shown towards the safety of pedestrians and bicyclists and towards safe routes to school as seen in multiple recent memorandums from the commission. I think this youth perspective would be extremely valuable to have represented on the city's bicycle and pedestrian advisory committee. BPAC, BPAC. There are upcoming openings for BPAC if you use or want to use active transportation, walking, biking, scootering, skateboarding, rollerblading, et cetera, to get around the city. Or if you are passionate about safe routes to school or vision zero, I encourage you to apply for a position on BPAC. Also consider suggesting this opportunity to friends or school groups who have these interests. Note that I'm not a member of BPAC, just a member of the public who thinks that BPAC would benefit from some youth's perspective. I am assuming that youth are eligible to serve on BPAC, but if you are interested in the position, you might want to double click. The link is provided in their correspondence with information from the website. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to public record. Are there any members of the, I mean, open forum? Are there any members of the public that wish to speak on an item not on the agenda today?
Yes, we do. We have Lillian Koenig for open forum.
Even or not, I was a youth once too. Um, it's never too late to be active and um, to uh, be environmentally conscious. Uh, as you know, I'm a sub teacher and I've been to a number of different schools. And we have environmental um, young people that are interested in gardening, they're interested in their environment, but they don't understand exactly everything about carbon neutrality and climate smart and things like that. So sometimes that bring up trees because everybody understands trees, right? And we all have a favorite tree when we were growing up possibly that we really loved. Uh, and would jump on that tree, go up in that tree, maybe build a, a treehouse in that tree. And it may be that that particular mature tree is still standing today, if you're lucky. If you're lucky. So my uh, reason for coming today is because for um, district three, which is where I live, um, I've noticed quite a bit of encroachment in our parks and developers. Um, if you pay attention, uh, you will notice that one day you'll see these beautiful mature trees there and the next day they will be gone because in our time, we know that developers are uh, encroaching on public space. And this is a time to be um, active in your community when you see this happening. Uh, don't turn a blind eye to that because your kids and your grandkids, if they so desire, will want to live in green spaces and green spaces means tr- mean trees. Now, when we take away our mature trees and uproot them, we also uproot the soil, which is the benefit of having a mature tree harbors carbon within that soil. I'm not going to get scientific about it, but um, so San Jose was noted at, at one time for being Tree USA. And we are now back implementing that and trying to plant trees, which is wonderful. But why are we uprooting so many mature trees? This is something you have to pay.
All right, thank you, Lillian. I appreciate you being here. Do we have any other members of the public that wish to speak?
No, we don't.
Then we'll move on to the first action item, which is a informational presentation by Ms. Melissa Liu on the Youth Leadership Summit.
Good evening, San Jose commissioners. Thank you again um, for having me. Um, thank you also to the San Jose Commission for supporting the thank you gifts for our youth speakers. Um, it's been, I think, three months since um, we last came here, but um, our office has been really hard at work. Um, finalizing details for the upcoming Youth Leadership Summit event this Saturday, April twenty-seven. Um, as of this morning, I think we have about two hundred and sixty-five uh, registrants from all over Santa Clara County. Um, just to share uh, the agenda that we've pretty much finalized, uh, the event is from nine to twelve um, P M. But doors do open at eight thirty, so uh, from eight thirty to about nine fifteen, that'll be registration and breakfast. Um, from nine fifteen to about nine twenty-five, um, there will be the event introduction. So the county uh, chief children's officer, Sarah Duffy, will be providing opening remarks. And our youth task force co-chairs will be providing um, like an event introduction. Then at about nine thirty, we'll have our featured speaker, so that will be kind of like a fireside chat. So that's similar to um, like a converse, having, you know, just an intimate conversation with our featured speaker. And it will be Dr. Jeff Duncan Andrade. So he is a professor um, of Latina-Latino Studies and Race Resistance Studies at San Francisco State University. So we'll have um, three of our commissioners kind of just asking um, questions. So it makes it a more intimate conversation rather than having um, a speaker um, just speak to the audience. Um, then at about nine fifty-five, we'll have some leadership remarks. So we have um, our county executive, James Williams, we'll have the county superintendent of schools, Dr. Mary Ann Dewan, um, providing some remarks, and we'll also have county supervisor, Susan Ellenberg. Then after that, um, excuse me, at ten fifteen, uh, we'll have our youth panel. So it is quite a big panel. We do have nine panelists, um, and they'll be discussing local student wellness issues. So some uh, of the youths come from Alco, Fresh Lifelines for Youth, or Fly, uh, Somos Mayfair, and also Bring Change to Mind. So some topics um, that they will be discussing are self-love, uh, wellness and financial health, the impacts of um, immigration on wellness, uh, self-discovery journey, social media, and also film production and student wellness advocacy. Um, then at ten forty-five, it'll be kind of the, the breakout session, so that'll be the resource tables and activities. So there will be a wellness center tour at the Oak Grove High School. There will also be uh, yoga sessions that are offered inside the wellness center. Um, so the resource tables, we have about thirty organizations um, as of now um, who are going to be coming. So some examples, um, Alco will be tabling, the Downtown Youth Wellness Center, um, Excite Credit Union, we do have NAMI coming, New Hope for Youth, we have Pacific Clinics, um, the registrar of voters, and we do have the San Jose Youth Commissioners tabling. Um, we have Somos Mayfair and uh, the YMCA Silicon Valley, just to name um, some of the agencies. Um, we will also be uh, providing a student wellness survey, so that's um, an opportunity for our commissioners to really learn and hear from um, other youths in the county um, on their views about um, student wellness and their wellness centers. So it's a total of about ten questions, so the data will be compiled and shared um, with our county behavioral health um, department. And then there will also be an arts and crafts uh, table there, so the commissioners chose to um, offer origami and some rock painting. Um, and then we'll close out at about eleven forty-five with a call to action and some raffle prizes. So the Santa Clara County Youth Poet Laureates will be doing spoken word. Um, we'll also be having someone from the Youth Liberation Movement um, providing a call to action. Then after all of that, um, in closing, we'll have a raffle prize drawing. And so some of the prizes are um, an iPad, so some San Jose Sharks gear, like I think there is like two signed hockey pucks, um, a lunchbox, like a mashup San Jose um, Sharks and Forty-Niners gear and other things, um, some school supplies. And um, the YMCA is offering a twelve-month uh, gym membership. So really fun things being raffled off there. So that's kind of in a nutshell where we've landed. So um, just two confirming questions that we have for the San Jose commissioners. So um, currently, as far as uh, I understand, we have three San Jose commissioners who have uh, registered. We do also have um, a handful of the San Jose YAC members who signed up, so thank you so much for that. So just to confirm, um, because the San Jose commissioners do have a table, uh, can we confirm which of the commissioners will be attending that?
Um, district one commissioner will be attending. Um, we're in partnership with RISOM, which is the Voter Registration Drive Fellowship.
So, yes, th- thank you so much, Commissioner Mishra. So uh, RISOM um, will be co-tableing with our registrar of voters. But, but the San Jose commission, as commissioners, you do have your own table as well.
Right.
Um, so, thank you.
Thank you.
So will it, will it just be um, the district one commissioner? Is any, are there any other commissioners?
District three will also be going.
Okay, thank you for that confirmation. Um. Okay, and then um, so the, the commissioners who have signed up, um, are there going to be any other commissioners who will be attending and volunteer? Is, is the intent to volunteer or is the intent only to table, just to get that clarification? So we can also um, kind of keep track of volunteers, because as volunteers, you get t-shirts too. So just so our office knows.
Um, I believe to table.
Okay, so it will be all, um, I think the three commissioners that we have just to table, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Cool. Um, so just to close out my report, um, you know, thank you so much again for, you know, this wonderful relationship that we're developing and partnership. Um, if you could please also just do one final push, just, you know, share with your friends, it'd be fun to come to this event. Again, we have like thirty resource tables, there's a whole bunch of other youths from, you know, not just high schools, but other um, youth groups and organizations that support youth. So if you can help us just do that, one last push, um, get your friends registered, get your, you know, classmates to register, that would be great. And I am open for any questions.
All right, thank you. Do we have any public comment?
No, we don't.
Do we have any commissioner discussion or any questions? It looks like we don't have any questions on this side. Thank you for being here and for your report.
Thank you so much, commissioners.
Um, next up is the Youth Engagement Convening Report by a couple of our YAC members.
Hello, thank you so much for your time. Um, I'd like to start by saying that the Youth Engagement Convening um, was mainly aimed at, um, uh, I'm sorry, it was mainly creating, it was mainly aimed at um, creating a youth hub in collaboration with the Sobrato Center, and it brought together youth from various communities and various agencies, councils, um, a lot of volunteering organizations and general um, ethnic interest organizations. Um, there were a lot of representative, representatives from different um, types of organizations. And the focus was aimed at gathering uh, student input on uh, the, of what a potential youth hub would ideally look like. However, um, the exact nature of the convention's relationship to the San Jose um, Youth Services Master Plan was unclear uh, to general members, although I did follow up with the, um, with, I'm sorry for stuttering so much. I did follow up with the organizers who said that the youth hub was uh, an effort to implement the, the master plan. And I think Peter can take it from here.
Hello. Oh. Uh, yeah, so I'm just gonna go like over the actual like ev- event itinerary. So the event kicked off with like registration and then after that, we went into breakfast. And then after that, the opening session was led by David, who highlighted the plan for the youth center and emphasized the youth-driven vision at the core of the event. Uh, introductions followed, and then after that, attendees were broken up into breakout groups with Dia placing the identity group and me placing the design group. So for the design group, we, we actually dove into like the physical design aspect of the youth hu- or the youth hub at the Sobrato Nonprofit Center. And with that, it was an outdoor patio space where youth could just drop by. Uh, it would provide them with access to technology, resources, and opportunities for youth to explore their passions. And one of the ideas that was brought up was on the outside of the patio center, there's a wooden fence and maybe implementing something like downtown where youth can put their art pieces on display at, on those fences. And uh, after that, um, we, uh, after our breakout sessions, everyone reconvened. Um, we filled up with lunch and, yeah.
Right, thank you. Do we have any public comment?
No, we don't.
Okay, then, do we have any discussion from our commissioners?
Um, just quickly, uh, I'd like to wrap up by saying that the conference put a lot of emphasis on uplifting youth voices. And that was the main focus, like making the youth feel as though they were being heard by adults and had the capacity to enact change.
Hey, thank you. Commissioners. Commissioner Liu.
Awesome, okay, um, happy to have San Jose representatives there at the conference. So what were your takeaways? Because I know that there was different groups that came together and provided their perspective. Was there a goal in mind that San Jose had for sending the delegation to? The conference?
Yeah, so like Dia said earlier, um, we initially went into it thinking it was gonna be about the Children's and Youth Master Service Plan. But like further into the conference, we realized that that wasn't the main goal of it. And it was more about like shaping the Sobrato Center to be like a youth-focused space where youth could relax. It, we, yeah.
Thank you.
Overall, adding to what Peter said, the goals of the conference, quite honestly, remained muddy and unclear throughout. Um, there was an initial emphasis placed on making the youth feel heard. Um, and the Sobrato Center was not mentioned for a lot of the conference. Then later, the Sobrato Center was brought up with the splitting up of youth into different groups. Um, from there, the conference took a much more general inspirational tone. The, the goal mainly that seemed to be worked towards was the development of the youth hub for the Sobrato Center. Other than that, um, any other goals remained somewhat unclear.
Hey, Commissioner Megan Loon.
Thank you so much, Peter and Dia, for your efforts on spending time on these conferences. And also, I believe, attending the city council meeting where they discussed and passed the Services Master Plan. Um, do you want to talk a little bit more about that official meeting? And you may have learned something from the public comments or just like discussions between city council members. Just any takeaways that you have from attending the city council meeting?
Can you repeat that?
Did you have any takeaways from the city council meeting where they passed the Children and Youth Services Master Plan?
Oh, okay, thank you. Um, yeah, so the city council meeting where they passed the Children's and Youth Service Master Plan, um, my takeaway was that uh, there were more resources being poured into like the, into youth development in like, in San Jose, and it was cool seeing all the diverse populations coming together to share about their experiences with like public services and how they've like helped them. And to see that, or how they, they've helped them as youth. So to see that the city is putting more emphasis on putting funding towards um, towards the youth is really great.
Thank you, Peter.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Tilo.
Uh, thank you, Peter and Dia, for attending that conference. I really, really appreciate it. Um, and you guys taking the time out of your days to go and be delegates for the San Jose Youth Commission. I'm sure you guys did an excellent job. Um, I do have a question about what you guys actually did during the conference. Was there an emphasis on actually looking at the Children and Youth Master Plan and like creating conversation and having input into there, or was it just about how to, how to develop the Sobrato Center?
No emphasis was placed on the Children and Youth Services Master Plan. Um, the most that was said about the Children and Youth Services Master Plan was that the conference was in partnership with that plan.
Got it, got it. Wh- what um, other youth did you have um, at the conference? What other groups were present?
I'm having trouble recalling the exact names of the groups, but um, various uh, Hispanic organizations, I think. Uh, basically, um, representatives from various ethnic communities, I think representatives from the Sobrato nonprofit as well. Um, I think other nonprofit organizations as well. Um, and basically, um, also some representatives within um, our um, local government. Not, um, it, some representatives who are involved with our local government. Um, yeah.
Okay, yeah, thank you. Um, that definitely verifies things.
Hey, anyone else? That concludes this action item. Thank you, Peter and Dia, for being here to present. Moving on. Okay. Moving on.
Chair, this is an action item. Can you motion?
All right, do we have a motion to approve their report?
Commissioner Liu moves to approve the report.
Do we have a second?
Commissioner Gonzalez, may you second that motion?
And this motion passes. So now we will move on to the next action item, which is the Youth Commission Manager's Budget Addendum. Do we have public comment on this item?
No, we don't.
Okay, then moving on, do we have any commissioner discussion? Okay. Then, oh, Commissioner Liu.
Thank you for accommodating me. Um, okay, the manager's budget, then them, right?
Yeah.
Okay, um, i- i- is there, compared to last year, is there anything different that we're requesting this year or that the same?
Um, this is based on what we received from the survey and from our budget summit. So I'd say that the priorities have shifted a little bit, and we're gonna try to address that.
Okay, it's asking the chair to draft a letter. Okay, nevermind, thank you.
Okay. Okay, anyone else? Okay, then do we have a motion to approve the chair to draft a letter, a budget addendum during the fiscal year twenty-four to twenty-five budget process that summarizes youth feedback from the Budget Priority Summit and Youth Survey?
Commissioner Liu moves to approve the items.
Is there a second?
Commissioner Mishra seconds that motion.
Passes, so we'll move on to the Youth Commission Fiscal Year Annual Report, which will be presented by Ms. Malora.
Hi, guys. Um, so in your packets, you will have uh, two items. So this is the annual report that you guys need to approve, that you all present at Neighborhood Services and Education Committee Meeting on May ninth. Um, and then, so this is just, we're just gonna whip through it. This is what it kind of looks like. Um, in conjunction, we will also be attaching the report that you all have um, in your packets and that was attached to the agenda uh, that contains um, all the information about uh, the work that you guys did this year and the reports that you submitted to be included.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any public comment?
No, we don't.
And do we have any commissioner discussion or questions? All right, it looks like no. So do we have a motion to approve our annual report?
Commissioner Liu moves to approve the annual report.
Okay, do we have a second?
Commissioner, please, come on, second motion.
Okay, thank you. Okay, well, it looks like our motion passes. Uh, so we'll move on to our reports and information only. Up first, we have Mr. Alex Dersch from the Councilmember Committee's office.
Chair, we have to discuss the item that was moved from consent.
Oh, right. We'll be talking about um, district ten's poverty proposal. Commissioner Liu.
There are a few questions, so that I have, first of all, I want to commend you and your YAC for putting it together. I know it's a tough feat to put any proposal together, so um, gradually putting this together. There are just a few clarifying questions I have. First of all, I, I wholeheartedly support the idea of a universal um, income program. My question is, so there, a few years, or a few years ago, or a month, a few months at this point, um, the spotlight reported that the city of San Jose had one of the largest, if not the largest, youth homeless populations um, anywhere else in the country. And to address that, um, the city didn't specifically, or the county didn't specifically, um, dive right into addressing the issue. I'm sure that there are some things that um, they did. But the bulk of it was the state coming in and providing that type of universal income to alleviate people from, for example, poverty, right? So I'm wondering if you've heard about the research and its possible benefits or outcomes that we've seen. Um, benefits or outcomes that we've seen that we could use to benefit, you know, specific San Jose homeless population.
Yes, so I believe, I forget the exact acronym for the report, but there it was done in around twenty twenty. And so I think that the main takeaway from that report, from what I remember was that. The state gave funding to counties and local governments to use funding to go towards homelessness and addressing poverty. I think it was something along the lines of the five percent youth homelessness poverty, something with that went along those lines and. What they found was that when they gave municipalities that funding, they actually used more funding than the state actually gave them. And so they were investing in addressing these poverty and homelessness issues. And I think that. That initiative which the municipality showed is the reason as to why we actually wrote this in the first place. And um, I think that that trend of look, the city of San Jose is doing so much right now to address homelessness, whether it's. Moving homeless people out of our creeks, anything of that sort. And so I think that going along those lines and building the bridge of. Hey, look municipalities and local governments are looking to invest in addressing youth homelessness. Um, how can we do so? And I think that this report was mainly providing a mechanism for which. We can do so, we can identify those needs and how can we can address them going forward.
Okay, if I continue talking. Okay, thank you. Um, okay, um, uh. There are a few questions I have, but um, I'll make these two as direct as possible. So. In the policy, the policy links the issue of homelessness with poverty. And I'm wondering because of the basic concept of universal um, income is to give money, right? Um, not not a specific for for specific restricted youth, but money in general. Would you, what would you say are some of the biggest factors in? Someone becoming homeless?
That's a deeply rooted question. I think it really truly depends on. I can't specifically say, look, this is the one issue, but. I would say that it has to do a lot with family situation, familial responsibilities, um. Yeah, there's just too many things that go into that to identify one certain thing. And I think that. Giving funding to, look, you guys can use this money to address your issue and not just, hey, this money should be going towards providing shelter. Since youth and the issues that they face are so diverse depending on a base to base basis, I think that. Giving generalized money towards not a specific area, but solve for you to use or families to use towards their specific needs is. The premise of this because I think poverty and homelessness is truly individualized. I mean, there's so many factors that go into it and it's. Not a generalization that can be made, like this family is in poverty or this. This one issue, it's truly a multitude of issues, so. I don't think I can address that directly. I think that it would truly just be. Based off of data, I think, data survey that could be sent out to help audit this program. Um, yeah, I don't know. I don't have a direct answer.
Uh, I think that's as direct as you can get. Um, my question is, so. Because we wrote a memo or the youth commission supported a memo that. Addressed the issue of RVs and encampments near schools. One of the big issues that that policy tries to tackle is. The use of drugs by people in those encampments and RVs near schools. So my question is hypothetically, um, what's preventing a homeless person from? Buying illegal substances or drugs? With this kind of program?
There would have to be provisions. I know that a lot of times the programs like this, there's case managers and people that. Oversee a lot of the, um, I think that there's an initiative with the Bill Wilson. There would have to be intermediaries, I think, and people checking up on that. I didn't go as depth into the program to not make it like twenty pages, but um. There would definitely have to be intermediaries in the program, case managers, um, some tracking, I'd say. But um, yeah, there has to be some sort of medium to make sure that it's not.
And the last question, thank you for indulging me, Chair. Um. So in the analysis part. Your recommendation is to quote, um, provide universal basic income. Only households at or below the rate of income adequacy rate. And in your analysis part, um, the county has approximately. A hundred and thirty thousand of those individuals. And then if we convert that into the city, it's approximately. Seventy eight thousand residents, right?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm really curious because this it seems like a big number even for the city. Um. Seventy eight thousand residents if we do the most minimum, which is five hundred. That'd be thirty nine million dollars. Um, so I'm wondering where would that come from?
So, right below that it says. Those GBI would be around seven K, so that would bring that down. This was drafted on February twenty fourth before we realized they were in a deficit. So um, obviously some things might have to change, numbers might have to change according to that deficit. But um, I don't know the exact answers right now. Um, I know that it is lower than the seventy eight thousand that is written on there because. The proposal, the proposal is for seven thousand, so that takes it around ten percent down. But um, yeah, I don't know exactly where it come from from right now. I know that the city has invested a lot into homelessness. And so maybe some direction out there, but um, don't know exactly where that would come from as of right now. That would have to be done by studies and a lot of financial audits.
Thank you. Yeah, I again wholeheartedly support the idea of um. Your proposal.
Alright, thank you. Do we have any public comment?
We do none.
Do we have any further commission discussion? Alright, then do we have a motion to approve District Ten's poverty proposal?
Commissioner Liu moves to approve um, poverty and universal income proposal.
Do we have a second?
Uh, Commissioner Bunzel, second that motion?
And this motion passes, so we can move on to our reports and information by council member Kume's office.
Thank you so much. I'm more excited than usual to share with you this item today because. This item, a presentation on city councils. Um, from the city council meeting on March fifth. Item three point four, storm water permit requirements, homelessness and neighborhood considerations, which I've learned you all have a printout too, so that's great. Um, I'm more excited than usual to talk about this because today is coincidentally Earth Day. Um, so it's very relevant to protecting our waterways and. Um, also our office, Vice Mayor Rosemary Kume's office has um, announced that we'll be launching. An adopt a storm drain pilot program for D one residents that is coming soon, so be sure to stay tuned from our office for more details about that. So this presentation in my citations, most of the information comes from the city manager's office memorandum. Regarding the item that was approved by council. There's also some some information from the city's environmental services webpage and uh. The Parks and Recreation Department's webpage. So some background about this item. The Federal Clean Water Act requires that the city of San Jose comply with something called. The Municipal Regional Stormwater National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System Permit. It's a mouthful, so I'll just call it storm water permit. This permit regulates how cities manage and reduce pollutants that go into our waterways. Which San Jose has a hundred and forty miles of of creeks and rivers. Which all flow eventually into the San Francisco Bay and then the Pacific Ocean. So it's very important to keep these clear to protect our waterways. Compliance with this permit is overseen by the San Francisco Bay Regional Water Quality Control Board, which I will call Water Board. The city is required to submit a plan to the Water Board demonstrating how we will comply with the permit. One aspect of this plan is called the Direct Discharge Plan, which specifies how the city will reduce the direct discharge. Or release of pollutants into our waterways. The Water Board recently rejected the city's Direct Discharge Plan. And therefore did not approve the permit for them because they said it did not do enough to protect waterways from trash and bio waste. Coming from encampments where unhoused residents live along creeks and streams. Civil and criminal consequences for noncompliance include potential fines, penalties and litigation. This is a very serious issue. The Water Board said that the city, quote, needs to incorporate proximity to creeks and other receiving waters. As a criterion for encampment abatement, which means declare an encampment. And specifically, they recommended five hundred, within five hundred feet. The current criterion for context for whether encampments are abated include whether an encampment is within a hundred fifty feet of schools. Whether it blocks public right of ways, whether it produces serious health and safety concerns, or whether it obstructs critical infrastructure. Regards in regards to the recent city policies that are relevant to this item as well as recent city. Actions to the Water Board, reducing unsheltered homelessness. And then cleaning up our neighborhoods are both twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four city council focus areas. Which are policy topic areas that the council has identified as top priorities for the city. The city submitted their Direct Discharge Plan to the Water Board three times on January third of last year. May twenty second, and then most recently on October second. All these three plans proposed were rejected by the Water Board. In September of last year, the city council submitted what's called a long-term trash load reduction plan to the Water Board. Which is another necessary component of complying with the storm water permit. The storm water permit requires that the city, requires the city to have a hundred percent trash load reduction by June thirtieth, twenty twenty five. And the Direct Discharge Plan is a necessary component of getting to this hundred percent trash load reduction goal. The Department of Environmental Services in the Office of the City Manager presented this memorandum to council with three options. For the council to take action to comply with the Water Board's guidance and the storm water permit. City staff recommended the first option in particular for council to take. The options were one, enhanced neighborhood and waterways approach. Two, neighborhood prioritization approach, and three, storm water compliant approach. Council unanimously unanimously approved the stack staff recommendation of policy option one. Its goal is to comply with the storm water permit while maintaining acceptable service levels in neighborhoods. The key ask, the key details of the approach are presented as follows. There would be four phases. Phase zero, beginning from now through June, would be to develop strategies and cost projections. For prioritizing direct discharge mitigation efforts, so reducing the trash and waste going into our streams. In the zones required to comply with the permit. Which would mean within the five hundred radius around creeks and streams. Phase one would be in the beginning of the next fiscal year from July to December of twenty twenty four. Which would scale up city staff and resources to prepare for and begin implementation. Of a new Direct Discharge Plan and service delivery to unhoused residents. Phase two would be in the beginning of the next calendar year, January or June twenty twenty five. Scaling up implementation of this new plan and service delivery, further abatement and transitioning of people into shelters. Beginning securing abatement area, abated areas to prevent reencampment. And then in phase three and beyond, continue abatement and transition transitioning of people into housing and services. Maintain enforcement and compliance of abated areas. The Office of the City Manager will return to city council with spending proposals in order to fund phase one and two efforts. In the upcoming fiscal year twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five budget. Council will take actions during the budget process in order to shape a final budget for this fiscal year. We're currently in this period. There will be many upcoming dates that are very important in the budget process, which you can find. On the city manager's website under Budget Office. And the city council will vote on approving a final capital and operating budget for the city on June eleventh of this year. Thank you again for your time.
Alright, thank you. Do we have any commissioner discussion or questions? Um, Commissioner Mascherinas.
I thank you for this report. Um, it's insightful to learn about what the city's doing. I just had a quick question about the abatement process and so. The increase has been from a hundred and fifty to five hundred feet, and I know that. The we will continue abatement from January to July, but in between then, what happens to these people who are being displaced and where do they go and? What is like the status of moving these people into shelters when they've been living close to the creeks and how that will work sort of?
Yeah, that's a really good question. There's uh, there's more specific details on the city's website. Um, and specifically, if you reach our office, we can point you in the precise direction to learn more about that, but thank you.
Alright, anybody else? Okay, then we can move on. Thank you for your report. Um, next is the PR and S report.
Good evening, everybody. Mo for PR and S updates. Emma Prush Farm Park Playground Expansion Project is in the works. Family Camp is open for reservations and April and May events, volunteer events are available on our website. Uh, this past weekend, there was a ribbon cutting event for Payne Avenue Friendship Park. And all of our communities will, centers will be closed on May twenty seventh in observance of Memorial Day. Uh, for recruitment, we are hiring for lifeguards. And also I'd like to add that the San Jose Youth Empowerment Alliance. The city's Youth and Gang Violence Prevention Strategy, formerly known as the Mayor's Gang Prevention Task Force. Is joining the National Youth Violence Prevention Week effort by increasing awareness of city. Community-based organizations and county resources available to youth and residents. Some of their efforts just this week include promoting at all nine Project Hope Great American Litter Pickup Events. There was also a youth empowerment zone this past weekend at Viva Caie. Um, banners were distributed promoting Youth Violence Prevention Week for community centers and libraries. And all youth intervention service programs will be out in full force this week to promote all resources at schools and in the community. Um, there will be two thousand two hundred San Jose Youth Empowerment Alliance wristbands distributed at schools. As well as five hundred shirts. Also, the commissioners will be receiving a goodie bag from Israel's team soon as well. End of report. Thank you, everybody.
Alright, thank you. Do we have any commissioner discussion? Okay, it looks like we do not. So thank you for your report. We'll move on to the San Jose Public Library Report.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Michelle Ornot, Deputy Director of Public Services for San Jose Public Library. This week is National Volunteer Appreciation Week, and it's a time to recognize the nearly fourteen hundred volunteers. Who have contributed over thirty five thousand hours of service at San Jose Public Library. Library staff are recognizing volunteers by hosting a recognition event at their branch library and spotlighting volunteers. Through a series of blog posts all week. This annual celebration recognizes the important contributions that library volunteers make in their community every day. By teaching coding, leading English as a second language conversation clubs, supporting as homework helpers. Friends of the library and also reading to children. The library has also launched a new pilot program with Santa Clara County Parks. This program offers free vehicle day use passes valid at over twenty county parks. And library cardholders can check out the pass for three weeks. This pass can be used multiple times during the checkout period. Although these passes are non-requestable and are only available on a first come, first basis. Library customers can call branches to see if they are available at the Dr. Roberto Cruz Allen Rock in Seven Trees Branch Libraries. The new park park pass is a great complement to the library's California State Parks Pass Program. Which provides library members free access to visit state parks and check out an outdoor. which provides library members free access to visit state parks and check out an outdoor exploration pack in order to prepare for their next outdoor adventure. Anyone who's interested in ending the summer with starting their own business and earning some cash can pre-register now for the We Thrive High School Entrepreneur Camp. This is being done in partnership with our library, so that way teens can learn how to start their own business, solve community problems, and sell products or services at a pop-up market where all the teens get to keep the profit. We thrive as a nonprofit organization that helps youth identify solutions in their community, hone skills to build a business, and launch real microenterprises. The program starts on June eleventh. It will be held at SJPL's Teen HQ. Space is limited, so please visit our events page for more information and to pre-register. Lastly, we've got two celebrations or two anniversaries to announce. The first is that on April tenth, Mount Pleasant Neighborhood Library, which is our first and still only Bridge Branch, celebrated its fifth anniversary. This location was created in partnership with Mount Pleasant Elementary School District. And this has allowed San Jose Public Library to repurpose an unused building located on the Robert Sanders Elementary School campus. So now this public library provides library services to residents in neighborhoods where geographic barriers may limit access. By transforming this vacant building on the school campus, it has provided a safe space for students and every member of the Mount Pleasant community to read, learn, and explore. And lastly, everyone is invited to Vinland Branch Library's twentieth anniversary on Saturday, May eleventh, from eleven AM to one PM. The community celebration will include remarks by Jill Born, City Librarian, and District Ten Councilmember Botra. Celebration will feature a local school performance and plenty of family-friendly entertainment from a bubbly party to happy birds, which are made possible by the Friends of Vinland Library, as well as enjoy refreshments, cookies, and cupcakes. So to learn more about our library programs and the celebrations, please visit sjpl.org or follow us on social media at San Jose Library. That's the end of my report.
Thank you. Do we have any commission to discussion? I don't think so. So thank you for your report, and we will check out those events. Moving on is the Chair Report. As mentioned before by Ms. Melissa Lou, the Youth Leadership Summit will be on April twenty-seventh, Saturday, and this is an opportunity to present and talk about upcoming youth commission or district events and about getting involved in the youth commission. So please make sure to sign up for this event and have your Yak members register. If there's anything you want to add to promote, please share it with me and Ms. Malloy so that we have those items ready to share. Also, this is a reminder for our NSC presentation on May ninth, you are expected to be there to present, and there will be mandatory scheduled practices during next week to prepare for the presentation. Additionally, a brief update on the Children and Youth Services Master Plan. On April ninth, I spoke alongside Ms. Laura Buzo and the City Manager's Office to present the master plan to city council. There were two point five hours of public comment in this in support of the plan, and it was passed unanimously. Finally, the last day to submit anything for our last general meeting on May twentieth will be May eighth, and our award ceremony will be on June ten. So please prepare to the three Yak member nominations to recognize at the event. And that concludes my report. So moving on to District One report.
Hey, everyone. So last month on March twenty-second, the District One Youth Advisory Council organized our first annual career exploration fair at Cupertino Library to showcase the various student-led organizations, school clubs, and more from around District One. It was super successful with over fourteen organizations and over two hundred and fifty attendees, which included parents, middle school students, and high school students from numerous different schools in District One. So huge shout out to the District One Yak members who spent a really long time planning and organizing this event and allowing a lot of people from District One to learn about membership and internship opportunities from these organizations. In addition, the District One Youth Advisory Council, along with RISO, a civic service fellowship organization, is holding a voter registration drive at the Youth Liberation Summit happening this Saturday on April twenty-seventh. So we're super excited for the this amazing opportunity to support and encourage youth in San Jose to be more civically engaged through this event. And finally, we're also working on a study center event sometime in May, I believe, to give high schoolers a comfortable environment and a lot of motivation to study for APs and final exams. And I believe that's all from me. Thank you.
All right, District Two.
Okay, hi, everyone. I wanted to start off with a report about our Yak meeting in March, where we discussed speaker presentations from our March Youth Commission meeting and specifically the one presentation by Think Hopeful. And since a significant part of our work plan is tailored towards mental health initiatives, we spent most of the meeting brainstorming questions for Think Hopeful as I had a meeting planned with them in the next week. So as I met with the representatives with the Chair of my Yak, we discussed the many questions and we proposed a potential partnership and invited the Think Hopeful organization to our next Yak meeting. Aside from the Yak, I had the opportunity to attend the joint meeting with the Library and Education Commission, where we reviewed the Children and Youth Services Master Plan. And I just wanted to put out there that after tallying all of our volunteer hours as a Yak, we have contributed a total of sixty-five hours. So that's something that they should be really proud of, and I wanted to commend my Yak members for their achievement. Yeah, that's all I have.
All right, thank you for my district update. At our last Yak meeting, we briefly discussed two upcoming events that members are encouraged to go, which were the Youth Leadership Summit and the Palo Alto Civic Summit. I ran through an overview of each event and helped them register, and after that, we did a quick review of what we've done over the year and if there are any last action items that they wish to pursue. At our next Yak meeting, we will be planning future events or policy ideas for our for our next commissioner. District Four.
On the individual commissioner level, I've been working individually on creating an MBA draft alongside some other commissioners. As a Yak, we have hosted two of our biggest events this year. We hosted a really successful Green Planet Conference at Berryas Branch Library with twenty-five youth attendees and had the help of three youth clubs, environmental clubs around San Jose attend and one run workshops. They brought in things like compost, and we made bee homes. It was really cool. And then just this Saturday, we hosted a very successful Innovate for Good Business Competition Event as well, welcoming forty people to the Berryas Branch Library, including five experienced business leaders and policy leaders to judge the event with over twenty youth participants creating ideas on how to solve inequities in healthcare, technology, and education. This was run by our deeper Yak, Social Racial Equity Team, and did an amazing job leading that. And then we're still working with the Office, District Office, to see if our period products and city libraries memo is feasible this year budget-wise. Our central focus now is really our AIM Conference coming up on June eighth. Advise, inspire, motivate. We'll be doing a massive outreach push for that soon. And then, of course, there's a youth summit on the twenty-seventh as well.
Okay, thank you. District Five.
So this past April sixth, District Five hosted their second annual introduction of public policy conference that focused on skilled, ethical, and empathetic-based training for for our members. And we also outputted two policy proposals related to substance abuse and decreasing the age limit on city internships to sixteen. We're developing those proposals further. We had a Yak meeting on the twentieth, which we discussed our priorities for next year, and we also hosted a conversation on local organization. I'm excited to announce that I've been appointed to the National League of Cities to represent San Jose, so I'll be serving alongside one of our deputy city managers and hope that next year we can see what other cities around the country can do for young people and bring those best practices back to San Jose. So I'm hopeful that next year will be very strong, and I'm excited to get the opportunity to serve. That's it.
Okay, District Six.
Okay, considering that it is AP season and a lot of my Yak members are juniors, we've definitely slowed down. And considering that the fiscal year is coming to an end, we'll probably have one more meeting and then wrap it up. We're also trying to have most of the District Six Yak members go out to the Youth Leadership Summit, which is going to be, I think, this Sat- or yeah, this Saturday. So hopefully we'll have good turnout there for D six. And then, again, just another reminder that I tell you guys every time, if you want anything posted on any of our social media, just give me a text. Or there's like T has started this new thing where like you can collaborate, which makes it so that it also shows up on your Yak, like your personal Yak Instagrams, which can be really helpful if you're trying to promote the same infographic twice. But yeah, just kind of this little month for District Six.
Thank you. District Seven.
All right, so for District Seven Yak, we met twice this month. And we spent most of the month working on writing policy, and I dedicated time to mentoring my Yak members on the intricacies of policy writing. I held an online policy writing workshop open to all S A youth. We had eighteen active youth participants who all gained hands-on experience writing one of our two policies from this month, and one was implementing citywide restorative arts diversion initiative for systems involved youth to divert them from the castle in incarcerated system. And also, we wrote and finished one for implementing a San Jose green businesses recognition program with the focus on the east side region of San Jose that has been historically left out of the sustainability movement. So on April twenty-eighth, coming Sunday, D seven Yak will host a senior development officer from Steve San Jose's Housing Department, who will come to debunk housing myths, deconstruct San Jose's housing policy for our understanding, and just talk about the importance of affordable housing. So if you or any Yak members interested in learning more about the efforts to solve the housing crisis in San Jose or just want to become more well-informed about it to drive more meaningful initiatives forward, please join us on to on this Sunday at two PM at the Tulley Branch Library on April twenty-eight. So yeah, many of my Yak members are excited about attending the Youth Leadership Summit as well, since they contributed to planning the early version of the events wellness aspects. But overall, that's that's it, and thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. District Eight.
So my update is that my last year committee, me, my Yak, and Megan, we made a work plan for this year, and we're planning on doing a tree planning like however not Vedant did. We're planning on doing it around August, around the time Youth Commission starts. And so I'm planning on having my council member and District Five's council member there to help, and then I'm planning on also informing Andrew about it so he could help come help me. And I've also informed Vedant so he can give me some tips on how I can, you know, do better on it and do well. Another thing is that Welsh Park is having a health and safety fair on Saturday, May eleventh, twenty twenty-four, from ten to one PM. So if y'all, if you, any of you guys wanted to come by and stop by, I'll be there to help out. Another thing, it's really funny though. So another thing is that um, hold on, what was it? Another thing is that I found a group called Youth Council Committee, which is basically based off DA and the Youth Commission. I've never heard of it before. It was weird. Supposedly, they do the same thing that Youth Commission does and what DA does. And I'm apparently their vice chair. So they made me their vice chair apparently, and I was really confused on it. I was like, I never, they never informed me anything about me being vice chair or they never informed me about the group. And that's the funny part. And then I visited their meeting, which was, what, what day was it? It was like a week ago on, I'll just say, because I don't remember the exact date. It was a week ago. I went there and then they they told me everything about what the group does and what the group is, what the group is involved in. And and I talked to the staff about it, so I'm gonna be getting more informed about it, and hopefully, I guess, we work well together. That's it.
Thank you. District Nine.
Yeah, so this month, we didn't have a Yak meeting because it was kind of hard getting attendance because of like the AP tests and everything. But asynchronously, we create, we've begun to create flyers and plan outreach for next year. The Environmental Ad Hoc created the Ad Hoc Report earlier this month, thanks to Vedant, Nolan, and Dietrich. We will most likely meet once again. Other than that, I received some more applicants through the connection with the high school through the Volunteer Opportunities Page, and we are beginning to wrap up this year.
Thank you. District Ten.
Yeah, thank you. So we have officially adopted Almeden Lake Park, and so we will be hosting monthly cleanups as a Yak starting next month after AP exams, and our council office has also reached out to plan a pickup slash cleanup slash weeding next year, so we will probably be doing that in around August. We passed two policies today, which we drafted over the last month and going into earlier months. We co-hosted a budget mayor talk, so a local neighborhood association had invited the mayor to talk about the budget, and we helped co-host and run the event as a Yak. I've also invited the council member to our final event to cap off the year, to share with him the things that we've done and look forward to next year. And we are also looking towards planning a walkathon event for next year.
Thank you. Citywide.
Yeah, thank you. So this month, we have not met as a Yak yet, but we are looking to hold a meeting before the month ends. I also affirm support for a business awareness campaign led by one of my Yak members, and this will be in partnership with Silver Creek High School, Future Business Leaders of America. The Environmental Ad Hoc completed the report earlier this month detailing all the efforts led by the Ad Hoc this year, and we will probably meet once more before the fiscal year ends to discuss the future of environmental advocacy in the Youth Commission and potential plans for next year. I attended Apollo Alto Amateur Radio Association Meeting this Saturday and participated in the building of a vertical antenna and learned how youth can get involved in building antennas during emergency situations, and I think that's a pretty useful skill because it's emergency preparedness. And I truly believe that we could launch a program around this in the future. Aside from that, I'm looking to begin the transition for the next citywide commissioner, and yeah, those really are the plans for next month. That's all. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So moving on to our next item, are there any future agenda items that you wish to be in our May general meeting agenda? So I'm gonna take that as a no. So our next commission meeting will be on May twentieth at six thirty PM in Council Chambers. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Commission goes all the money, motions to adjourn the meeting?
Do we have a second?
Our commissioner's seeing second motion.
Okay. Okay, so this motion passes, and this meeting is adjourned at seven thirty-seven PM.